Ready to go in your.
We'll call the meeting in the planning commission order this April fifth, two thousand twenty-three. If staff could call roll, please.
Paul Wegman. Brian Parsons.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Here.
Lynn Larson.
Here.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Don Daniels.
Here.
You have Quorum.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Before us, we have the minutes of the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Mr. Wegman, Commissioner Wegman made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Larson made a second. Any discussion, changes? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Hearing none, minutes passed for March fifteen, two thousand twenty-three as written. Steph, any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to open up public comment. Those individuals wishing to speak on any topics to my fellow commissioners. We do have a public hearing, so if you wish to speak during the public hearing, under public comment, those comments won't be recorded as under the public hearing. So you can speak to any type of subject you wish under the public comment period at this time, and I'll open it up for public comment at this time. So I do have many people under the public hearing, but like I mentioned, anyone wishing to speak under public comment period? You're more than welcome to step up to the deus here and ask if they could to speak to the commissioners. So anyone wishing to speak under public comment, go right ahead, sir. Step up. State your name and the city you reside.
Hi, my name is Paul Whitaker. I reside in Gig Harbor, Washington. However, I've been a member of the Lakewood Rapid Racket Club here, five blocks down the street for the past twenty-five nine years. I'm currently the vice president of the club and currently acting president of the Lakewood Racket Club. The Lakewood Racket Club has requested rezoning to permit building up to six more indoor tennis courts on our eleven acre property that, as I said, is located about five blocks south of this building. We host USTA League tennis matches for adults and universal tennis rating tournaments for children, so they can compete in local tournaments at appropriate levels and put their ratings on their college applications to assist with potential scholarship awards. Parents who come from surrounding cities drop their children off to compete in the tournaments and go and spend money in the Lakewood Town Center stores and restaurants during the day. The Lakewood Racket Club donates court time to two high school tennis teams in the area, so they can practice indoors during inclement weather. In the summertime, our numbers swell as local residents from Lakewood come to use the pool and stay for the tennis, ping pong, pickleball, and Jimmy Quinman. Each month, we host about twenty USTA League tennis matches versus teams traveling to Lakewood from Bremerton, Olympia, Parkland, Shelton, and Edgewood. We have over forty banners hanging on the walls of the courts of our club for Lakewood tennis teams that have won the Southwest Washington League, the Pacific Northwest multi-state sectional tournaments, and we've had several teams qualify for nationals. Kids in Lakewood take tennis lessons from our club tennis professionals. Many of these children are then able to qualify for their high school tennis teams and for their college tennis teams. It rains, unfortunately, an average of one hundred fifty-six days per year in Lakewood, Washington. The club is owned and operated by its members who are clamoring for more indoor court time. We need more indoor tennis courts to be available for the citizens of Lakewood and the surrounding areas. And thank you for your time and consideration for our request for rezoning. And I have a couple of colleagues with me, one of whom would tell you which rezoning request we have and the other to comment on our comments.
Great. If they'd like to, on the public hearing part, if they'd like to speak at that particular time, so it's recorded under the public hearing, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else here on the public comment period, if you want to speak under the public hearing when we open it up regarding the zoning, that would be appropriate time at that, at that, on those issues. But if you wish to speak to any other issues other than the rezoning of the applications before us, you're more than welcome to speak at this particular time. But if it's the, for rezoning or the amendments that are proposed for rezoning, speak under public comment. Whoever signed up, I'll call you at that time. Great. No problem. We appreciate it. So anyone else wishing to speak under public comment at this particular time before fellow commissioners?
Mr. Chair, we do have one person with their hand up online. I'm not sure if they're intending to speak during public comment or under the public hearing for the twenty-three complan amendments.
Okay, those that had raised their hand under public comment, if you wish to speak under public comment, go ahead and state your name and your city reside. That's Na- is that Naomi C?
Yes, yes, it's Naomi. It's Naomi C. I'm sorry, I do have to go, so this is my only time to provide public comment. Can I still provide comment on the comp plan?
You can, but if you wish to be recorded under public hearing, I request that you do it at that particular time.
Ms. C, we also did receive your written comments today, so we have those for the record.
Okay, great. That sounds great. All right, as long as the written comments were received. Thanks. I'll have a good night.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you for signing in. Appreciate it. So I'll ask again, anyone wishing to speak under public comment period at this time? Seeing or hearing none and no attendees online at this time will close the public comment period at this time. Thank you. Okay, moving along. Now we move to the public hearing. Public hearing is on the proposed two thousand twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments. Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will walk briefly through a presentation that summarizes each of the amendments that are before you this evening for consideration during the public hearing. This is the two thousand twenty-three comprehensive plan process. As you know, the commission is also looking at the twenty-four process, which is the much larger one. This is specific to this year's comprehensive plan amendment requests. So back in December of twenty-two, the council set a docket of nine items to be included in this year's consideration. There was a study session held on March fifteenth where these were reviewed, and tonight we're at a public hearing. In terms of next steps, right now, the commission is scheduled to have a discussion on April nineteenth on any comments you hear tonight, coupled with any suggestions that the commission members may have regarding edits, and then if there's additional information coming from staff. And then at this point, the commission is scheduled to take action on May third. And I'll just say right now that if the commission thinks it needs longer than that, you're certainly welcome to take longer. The first one is adding the tree canopy goal citywide of forty percent by two thousand fifty. The commission is familiar with this through the tree code discussions last year, and the recommendation is to adopt this because this is the last piece to the adoption of the city tree code. The second application is for what was originally three parcels from a private applicant to rezone from MF three to Central Business District. And what was since added by the commission's conversation and then the county, or sorry, the city council's action was that lighter green MF one, five or six parcels just below to the south of the MF three parcels to also be included in the Central Business District zoning. If these were to go forward, just so the commission is aware, there would need to be an additional step where the downtown suburbia plan boundaries were also updated because as it sits right now, Central Business District is a zone that is exclusive to that subarea, so it'll be a two-step process. The third application is what you just heard from Mr. Whitaker regarding. This is an application that was received last fall as part of the application process from the public to rezone three different parcels from mixed residential one to open space and recreation two. However, within the last week or so, this has been changed by request and writing from the applicants to no longer look at OSR two, but to rezone to neighborhood commercial one. And so because of the timing and the fact that we're here before you tonight for a public hearing, staff is asking that you allow time for us to conduct an updated CIPA analysis, and we would get that to you on the nineteenth, but you could then look at, talk about, and be ready to potentially take action, excuse me, on the third. The fourth application relates to four different parcels, which are tied to the Lhasa Phase Three of its Gravel Lake Commons project. At this point, it's a twenty-five permanently low-income housing unit development proposal ranging from one to three bedrooms. And as you see here on the map, there are four parcels around a number of different zones. The request here is to rezone to neighborhood commercial two. The recommendation from staff is to approve this amendment or recommend to the council to approve it. The fifth is the, probably the most complex of the applications for amendment this year, and this is in reaction to state law changes that have happened over the last few years. So I'll spend a little bit longer on this one, but just know that this will also be one where staff is asking for some additional time. First of all, the amendment itself is to allow emergency housing and shelter within residential zones, R one through R four, mixed residential one and two, multifamily one through three, arterial residential commercial zone, the neighborhood commercial one and two zones, transit-oriented commercial, central business district, and then the commercial one, two, and three zones. To also allow permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, which are already allowed in many of those other zones I just mentioned, but to add them to the commercial one through three. And then also to recognize the allowance of foster care in all of those zones that you see there, so R one through R four, MR one and two, MF one, two, and three, arterial residential, commercial, and central business district. And then the last piece to this amendment is a city request to remove a section out of the code, which is referring to what are called concomitance agreements, which are just almost archaic at this point. The city doesn't use them. They're pretty rare anymore, and they aren't needed, practically speaking.
Wow.
So just a quick walkthrough, there are a number of state statutes that are in place requiring that the city do certain things with what we're going to summarize as special needs housing. So that's emergency housing and shelter, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. First of all, House Bill twelve twenty says that the city shall not prohibit indoor emergency shelters or housing in all zones where the hotels are allowed, as well as a majority of zones within one mile of transit. There's also a state statute that says the city shall not prohibit transitional or permanent supportive housing in any zones where residential units or hotels are allowed. The requirement or allowance, I should say, of cities or local governments putting restrictions on those types of development are limited to protecting public health and safety. There's a statute that talks about the city cannot regulate or limit the number of unregulated persons that may occupy a household or dwelling unit. There's a state statute that says there has to be sufficient capacity identified for foster care facilities. And then there is a statute that says a city may not adopt, impose, or enforce requirements on affordable housing that is different than the requirements imposed on housing developments generally. So there's quite a bit of you will, you shall, some of which is pretty recent in state law that the city is reacting to with this amendment. This is an attempt to summarize what's included in two thousand twenty-three oh five. The areas that are yellow is where there is some kind of change proposed. So you will see, for instance, over on the right, those three columns for emergency housing, shelter, and foster care. Those are all new additions to the code, so there's nothing in the code right now about those at all. What you see for rapid rehousing, that's already there except for C one, C two, and C three. And then for permanent supportive and transitional housing, it's kind of a mixed bag. They are being added as, right now, there's nothing in it at all for the commercial zones one, two, and three. But then there's also going to be some proposed updates to the conditions required or requested for those types of housing units in the R one through R four zones, as well as the MR one and MR two. So whether it's adding them for the first time or whether it's changing the regulations that'll go along with these, this is where there's going to be amendments proposed to the zoning map as well as to regulations. Partly why you're seeing some of these changes from the state law has also tied to a new requirement that's coming down from the state legislature through the Department of Commerce, which now says, City of Lakewood, as well as every other jurisdiction, you need to be planning for a number of units in every recognized income band. So once upon a time, it was city, you need to plan for over the next twenty years, this total number of people. Now it's you need to be planning for this many people or this many housing units at each one of these income bands. So what you see here, on the left-hand side, all the way to the left, that ninety-three seventy-eight, that is the total number of units that Commerce has identified for Lakewood right now. The zero to thirty percent, about half, a little less than half, is called non-permanent supportive housing. The others are permanent supportive housing. And then you'll see the thirty to fifty, fifty to eighty, eighty to one hundred, one hundred to one twenty, and above one twenty. Those are all different income bands, area median income numbers that the city is now going to have to start planning for in its big two thousand twenty-four update, as well as what we're doing right now with some of these changes. The other number you'll see there is in that bottom square. Lakewood currently has unidentified eight emergency shelter units in the city boundaries. Department of Commerce is saying that you need to be planning by two thousand forty-four for six hundred and thirty-seven units, so quite a change. This, in some ways, explains where the six hundred and thirty-seven number came from. This is a summary of the number of clients referred from the City of Lakewood to emergency shelters which are located outside of the city for the last six years, so seventeen through twenty-two. And in the year two thousand twenty-two, there were five hundred and ninety-six clients. Where are hotels allowed, and why are we talking about adding things to the commercial zones under state law? Where would that affect the city? This is a map of where hotels are allowed. And so what this proposal will do is add permanent supportive and transitional housing, as well as emergency housing and shelter to all of these areas of the city, the commercials, one, two, and three zones, as well as the transit-oriented commercial and the central business district. The other issue is where is there transit? Because if you remember, part of the state law said you have to allow these things also within one mile of transit. So this map is showing you the current zoning for the city, and then the dotted lines that are of different widths are showing you a quarter, a half, three quarters, and a full mile away from identified transit areas. So down at the bottom, I'll start here. It's a little easier to see. This is the Tillicum Sub Area, and there is a sounder stop that's planned. I'm not sure how far along they are with securing funding, but under law, we're planning for it now. And so the last, sorry, the last dotted lines here, the fattest ones, that's a mile away. So essentially, all of this area within a mile of transit is going to have to comply with where, excuse me, emergency and transitional and permanent supportive housing can go. On the main part of the city, up on the upper right, you'll see again, there's these lines of different distances away from where transit centers are identified. And so essentially, from this fat dotted line where my cursor is going up and down, all the way over to the city limits to the east, all of that would need to be complying with this new rule as well. So most of the city within the one mile is already, is being required to have these changes as well, regardless of zone. So where do we sit tonight? You're about to take public comment. You've received some in writing, but there's people here to testify in person as well. But we will just submit to you right now that staff is asking that you would keep the public testimony open through noon on April nineteenth, your next meeting, but also allow time for staff to take a look at what's been drafted to date, and that is in front of you tonight as part of the hearing, and make some changes based on what we've heard, not only from the Department of Commerce, we had a meeting with them the other day, but also we've heard from several service providers with some comments as well. So you can expect, if you're willing to do this, on April nineteenth, you will get an updated version of two thousand twenty-three oh five with some changes made based on, on all of that information. Number six is a pretty simple one after all of that. It's looking at just removing the term using federal funds within this one land use zone because now for relocation assistance, it no longer needs to be federal funds that the city uses, and the department recommends approval. The seventh is to rezone a single parcel to the southeast of current Wordslake Pike Park in order to add it into the park. It's already owned by the city. It's just a matter of rezoning so they can proceed with the changes to that lot that they would want to do to add it into the park itself. And then the eighth is to reflect changes in the comprehensive plan to the fact that the Western State Hospital Master Plan was finally completed in two thousand twenty-two. This, as you remember, has probably been in front of you three different years running now because it took longer than we anticipated, but we're finally there. This will be just to reflect the fact that that master plan is done, and there will be some changes to assumed types of people there, types of services provided at the campus, et cetera. The department recommends approval of this one. And then the last one in the package for this year is changing the language in Land Use Policy two point two five that right now says a property owner has to occupy either a primary or secondary unit when there's an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, on a parcel. This was something that, as of right now, with what has happened with state legislative bills, we recommend adopt as is. However, we are in the last stages of the legislative session, and there may be some bills that would affect this one. And if that's the case, we'll try to notify you of that before May third as well. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer questions or turn it back over to you for the hearing.
Any questions from fellow commissioners? Seeing none at this time. Thank you so much for your report, Ms. Tiffany. Thank you. So at this time, we're going to open up the public hearing. It's a proposed two thousand twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments. I have several people that have signed up, so your testimony in comments will be recorded. And so I'll just kind of go down the list. If you wish to continue and come up here and speak, there again, just state your name and your city that you reside. So we'll start again with Dr. Paul Whitaker. If you want to speak again under the public hearing, you're more than welcome. If not, we can move along to someone else. Yep, absolutely. You may give that to the staff. Oh, it's all good. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And then I go down to Mr. Ken Inslo. Okay, let's see. Who's Bill? Bill Peretta? Welcome. Thank you for coming and just state your name and the city you reside.
My name is Bill Peretta, and I reside in Furcrest, Washington. I have some sketches. Can I pass them to?
Yeah, absolutely, Steph.
I'm here to talk about the rezone for the Lakewood Racket Club project. And Paul kind of touched on the, the zone that we had initially submitted was OSR two and trying to remove the mixed residential use off the previous application. I'm an architect, retired architect, maybe ninety-five percent retired. But thanks to Paul and Ken, I'm back in the game again. So I looked at the, the pre-op meeting minutes for pre-op application, and I saw some comments there that were, I had some questions on, and, and based on that sketch I, I passed on to you, I did a test fit. And the test fit was to show the six courts on that, the property on the, on the east side. And it's, I think, the blue color?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the rest are the existing, which is the, I would say lavender or pink, and that represents the impervious surfaces. The OSR two, open space and recreation, will not support our, our plan expansion. And so I did a comparison with the, I met with the planner, and the NC one, the neighborhood commercial, is a very good fit to what we want to achieve for our site, mainly because the NC one allows for permitted indoor tennis facilities. Right now, the site was, I believe, was miszoned when Pierce County became Sea of Lakewood. They did not account that. There was a forty-five thousand square foot building, which houses the four indoor courts, racquetball facilities, and, and so forth. So to get it back into compliance and what's permitted for that site, NC one is a perfect fit for that site there. The site is composed of three parcels and with a total lot area of four hundred ninety-two thousand eight twenty square feet. The existing impervious on that site totals up to a hundred fourteen thousand four hundred sixty-seven square feet with the expansion of new indoor courts, new parking sidewalks, emergency vehicle turnarounds, there's two proposed circles, and EVA access, fifty, all that totals at fifty thousand plus square feet. When you add that to the existing impervious, that gives us over two hundred thousand square feet of, or forty-two percent of impervious area. The OSR two allows up to thirty percent. So we exceed that, even with the, going to the variance route, it's quite a big pill to swallow there. So with the NC one rezone, it allows up to seventy percent maximum impervious. And the indoor tennis facilities are permitted outright and without requiring a variance. Also, we have other phases in this project beyond the six-court expansion, improving the lounge area. It's a little small room built back in the, I believe, the sixties. And if you've gone out there and seen it, it sure can use some improvements to that. So we would expand it for the, the, the private membership and also reach out to the public for usage. Also, there's a discussion of adding pickleball courts. Pickleball is becoming a trend in, with court activities. And, and we're experiencing pickleball invasion at our club. They take Court Ten into our court, and they use it at periodic times. So you have a pickleball activity next to a tennis activity. It's, it's hard to concentrate, so it'd be nice to have a separate facility to house the pickleball players. So that's the, the reasons for the NC one request.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Now, Mr. Inslo, would you like to speak as well?
My name is Ken Inslo, and I'm a Lakewood resident. And I'll tell you what the three of us have in common is we're all tennis players, and we're all volunteering for the club. There's, and I thought I'd give you just a tiny bit of history of the club. And it was developed in the sixties, and it's a nonprofit. It's a five oh one C three. No one's ever turned a buck, and it's, well, anyway, there's not a lot of dough there. It's member-owned. We have four indoor courts and six outdoor courts. You need to come by there in the summer. It packs out on the outdoor courts with a lot of the college, good tennis players are teaching the youth, teaching anywhere from seven to seventeen years old. Packs out the courts, and they're teaching all these kids lessons. When the fall comes, it just kind of shuts down, and we open up one court, one of the indoor courts to run the youth programs. So, and it, it takes all the air out of all those kids that were there all summer, and it just, we just can't house them after that point. Some of the schools that use our resources is Life Christian. They got kids in there at six thirty in the morning. That's how, they would love opportunities to come later in the day, and they do sometimes. But they, they're there at six thirty in the morning because they know they can get a spot on the indoor courts. Clover Park uses them when they get rainouts on their, their tennis. PLU, up until recently, was using our courts. And we have a program for, it's, money's thrown in through donations to the club to sponsor any kid that comes on the door wanting to play some tennis that we can let the kids in. And, and we have a ton of senior tennis players that play in the mornings. If you go there between seven and noon, our four indoor courts are generally full with the seniors. We need these six new courts. Financially, we need them. The place doesn't, or gets more expensive. The place doesn't, or gets more expensive while the revenue gets frozen in that one spot. We need those six new courts to stay afloat out there as well as be able to provide tennis for our community. And the USTA puts out statistics that this area, the South Puget Sound, can use, I'm not gonna, I don't know the number, but it's a high number. It's like we could use another 30 indoor courts and they would be utilized. These clubs, or our club, is good for this community. We've been good neighbors to our immediate property around it. It is, we keep the place neat and the lawns mowed and, and have for the last, like I said, since the 60s. And NC1 allows us this, to build them. And we apologize about that change. If you need more of an explanation, I can give that to you, but we need that NC1 to be able to move forward. It's our hopes that we can be in the permitting stage this year and be building next year. But that's all hinging on this. So thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Mr., or excuse me, Carrie Hills?
Good evening. My name is Carrie Hills. I was born and raised here in Lakewood, continue to live here in Lakewood. I don't know these gentlemen here, but they own the racquet club behind my house or they're my neighbors to the backside. I would support them, being able to have more courts back there. If they built a lap pool, I'd be even happier. But I'm here to speak on 2023-05, which allows, or is wanting to allow, emergency housing and shelter. It sounds like from the earlier report that that's going to be kind of state mandated. There's no way out of that. I personally believe in local government so that they can protect my property rights. So I would hope a way, there's a way to get around having emergency shelters in residential areas. It's mostly going to impact low-income neighborhoods probably because those people that have higher income homes, they're not going to be buying those homes up to have shelters in those. But the areas that are probably going to be most likely impacted are going to be Tillicum and Springbrook. Any of the residents living out there, they deserve to have a quality of life as well. So hopefully you guys take that into consideration. I work downtown Tacoma now. I worked for a number of years at Greater Lakes Mental Health. So I see a lot of the people, having worked at Greater Lakes Mental Health, I know you guys talked about Western State today. Lakewood has been a longtime dumping ground for a lot of people coming out of Western State, which is unfortunate. So I know we have a higher need than maybe some communities. But working downtown Tacoma, I see a lot of the homelessness that's going on. I know the city of Tacoma has had to put camping bans around the shelters so to try and kind of regulate what's going on around those. I, I don't think anybody in their neighborhood wants to have to have a shelter where then they have to come through and put some kind of camping ban because homelessness is going on around their house. So something else to think about is, I know we have the defunct Lakewood Library over here now. I don't know if you guys went to the Lakewood Library when it was open and functioning, but there was a large number of homeless individuals that impacted that area greatly that people stopped going to the library because of how it was being impacted. And I personally would not want that in my neighborhood or any other residential neighborhood. If we're going to put shelters in, it should be an appropriate area. It should be here, Lakewood Town Center. How many stores have closed up that you could put shelters in here in Lakewood Town Center? So the last thing I wanted to share was, hang on, my phone keeps shutting off on me here, is just recently, in the Suburban Times, I read a story about the Lhasa program and the Prairie Oaks shooting that just happened. That's the kind of impact that's going to have on the rest of the single-family housing areas if you're going to put shelters and emergency housing into those areas. I don't think anybody wants to have a resident of the shelter shooting up their neighborhood. So hopefully you guys, being my local representatives, can do something to have an impact on whether we have to have emergency shelters and emergency housing in single-family or residential-type neighborhoods and we keep it into the business district. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Hills. Appreciate your comments.
Respected members of the commission, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Lua Pritchard and I am a proud resident of City of Lakewood. My Pritchard family has been here for many, many years. I'm also the chair, I'm the Executive Director of Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, but also the Chair of the Pierce County Asian Pacific Islander Coalition. I just want to say that City of Lakewood is made up of 12% of its population is Asian Pacific people. I am testifying today in regards to the proposed amendments to the city comprehensive plan. For more than 25 years, our organization has provided programs and services to the Asian and Pacific Islander community throughout Pierce County and here in Lakewood. This includes arts and culture, youth services, programming, mental health services, business and community outreach, and much more. We represent 47 different countries and over 50 cultures and over 100 languages and are deeply connected to our community and its members. We know that housing instability and homelessness continues to impact our community here in Lakewood and throughout Pierce County. In Lakewood's latest consolidated plan, it was reported that 48% of low-income Lakewood households had had at least one severe problem with their housing. But Pacific Islanders experience an even greater disparity with a 20% higher incidence of severe housing conditions. Housing instability is one of the driving factors for homelessness in the Asian and Pacific Islander community. For this reason, we are partnering with the Low Income Housing Institute to develop a six-story, 7-year unit, affordable housing building where we will provide ongoing supportive services to the low-income families who live there. While the building is in another community, Lehi has been a reliable and trustworthy partner on this project and we join them with their concerns on the proposed amendments to Lakewood's comprehensive plan. We know what works for our community and the proposal currently would impose too high a barrier for people in need of substance use treatment and counseling. The reality is that people have alcohol and substance use challenges and they need both housing and services together to recover. We ask the commission to remove the conditional use permit requirement to reduce barriers for homeless people with the highest need for treatment services and take a housing-first approach. There are numerous studies that show this is the most effective approach to reduce chronic homelessness. We are also concerned about limiting the proximity of emergency housing and shelter to require at least 1,000 feet between each facility. The City of Lakewood is approximately 18 square miles and it is important that low-income and formerly homeless people have access to healthy foods, public transportation, and access to services. We propose that this requirement be removed because it will discriminate against people living with disabilities, veterans, and families with children who either get pushed to the margins of the city or are not allowed at all. We would greatly appreciate if you could make these changes to address these concerns. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. Appreciate it, your comments. And we got Matthew Swery. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, my name is Matthew Sweeney. I'm speaking with regard to 0223202302. My client is Claude Ramey. Claude Ramey, he's the proponent. You're probably familiar with the site. It's right over here. Every time I drive by it, I say, we need redevelopment of this site in, in the worst way. We, I think we first met in October when this was first brought forward. We were down the hall there and we chatted and then it had some permutations and back and forth with the city council and stuff, but it's come back to you, basically just carving out that one square block now and trying to include it into the, into the central business district. And there's some real advantages to, to that because there's regulations and development standards in the central business district that really does try to encourage redevelopment. And those standards are really quite attractive to my client, who is a long-time multifamily developer here in the city, is a resident of the city. And he's, he's really keen on this project. I kind of, I shake my head and I, but I'm, I'm on the naysayer. That's my job is to be the naysayer, but he's really keen on it and he thinks he can make it into something with the, with the CBD standards and, and bring it forward. It's a pretty large project. It'll be a big bite to bite off and chew on, but I think, I think he can do it. And he's, like I said, he's really pushing forward to it. There'll be a lot of design review, there'll be a lot of architectural phasing and, and working with staff to, to make it compliant with the CBD standards and to make it something that, you know, he can be proud of. I'll digress a little bit. Back in October, things seemed pretty sunny. Since then, we've had a giant cryptocurrency crash and we've had a few bank failures and stuff. A lot of my clients are starting to look at each other and, and a lot of my clients do multifamily projects and development projects and, and money is the issue. Financing is the issue and stuff. And so might be, you know, things, things are a little choppy right now, but I think in, in due course, as he pushes forward with the permitting process and gets those permits in and designed and completed, that's not a overnight project. That's, that'll take a while. By then, things will settle down and I think you'll probably see financing free up enough to, to support a project like that. So staff is supportive of this and we really appreciate it. I know you folks have wrestled with it. If we could send it to the city council with an endorsement, I think they'll approve it as well. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much again. We appreciate your comments. We got Sharon Lee. State your name and the city you reside in.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sharon Lee and I'm the Executive Director of the Low Income Housing Institute, or Lehi. We're a nonprofit housing organization. I reside in Seattle. So we provide a lot of affordable housing throughout the Puget Sound region. We have over 3,000 affordable housing units. And as you know, we also have some tiny houses and other services. So in Pierce County, we also have housing in Milton, Puyallup, Tacoma. And recently, we purchased the Candlewood Suites in Lakewood. And we have renamed it after Maureen Howard. So it's called Maureen Howard Place in honor of a fabulous housing advocate. Maureen believes strongly that people should not have to live outdoors or live in a car and should have access to affordable housing. So we're very pleased that her family has, she and her family has allowed us to use her name. She passed away in January. So I'm talking about the comp plan amendment because I think it's going to impact terribly on the building that we are trying to provide. We want to work in partnership with the city. We have about 80 units and as you know, those are suites, those are apartment suites that have bathrooms and kitchens in them. Of course, our 80 units would greatly contribute to part of the 600 units that the state is asking Lakewood to provide for its residents. We want to thank Tiffany Spear, Planning Manager, for reaching out to us to work on amending the code. But I think, as you know, that updating the code is really necessary because Lakewood is now, is not following the code that talks about hotels should be used for, could be used for homeless housing and that city should not prohibit emergency shelter and homeless housing. So we believe that there are certain elements of the proposed plan that are, we think, in violation of the Federal Fair Housing Act and Washington state law. We think that the 1,000-foot distancing requirement and the 50-person density limit, as well as the very arduous conditional use permitting process, can be challenged as not being legal. That's because we think that zoning should not discriminate against people with, living with disabilities. Many of our people are living with disabilities. They could be physically frail. They could have a developmental disability. They could have behavioral health disorders. Also, as you know, many populations, including people of color, we serve a lot of homeless veterans, we serve homeless families with children, and these are all considered protected classes. So basically, the city's policy, we believe, should not discriminate against certain groups of people by the fact that when you have housing, when you zone multifamily, multifamily housing, you don't say, well, we're going to do multifamily housing for poor people and we're going to do something separate for, you know, wealthy people. So right now, you don't have a spacing or density requirement for market rate housing. You don't have a density or spacing requirement for hotels. So we believe that the city should not place those limits on people who are disabled or people of color or people we serve. We ask that you delay making this recommendation until staff can meet with us and Pierce County as well as the State Department of Commerce. The State Department of Commerce actually funded Maureen Howard Place so that we could address the people who are sleeping outdoors. I think we would rather have people getting counseling, getting treatment, as opposed to continuing to sleep outdoors. So we definitely want to be part of the solution. So we're committing to working with you, but we think it's very important that the measures you take are legal and that they not provide a burden or that they're not unreasonable in terms of permitting shelters, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Lee. Thank you.
Excuse me. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John Grant. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for the Low Income Housing Institute, or Lehi. I reside in Seattle. I'm testifying tonight for the, on the proposed comp plan amendment 2023-005. I wanted to provide some more background on our, on our concerns. The governor and state legislature in 2022 appropriated almost $45 million to move people inside who are living on or near state highways. These funds enabled our acquisition of the Candlewood Suites Hotel, now renamed Maureen Howard Place. Our state and county partners helped Lehi acquire this property in order to operate in emergency shelter and later convert it into permanent supportive housing. We believe the proposed legislation unfortunately is out of date, draconian, and possibly illegal because we believe it discriminates against people who may have mental health and substance use disorders, which are disabling conditions in a protected class, which is also what our facility is intended to serve. Specifically, we're requesting the following key changes. First, we want to urge the city to remove the conditional use requirements for these special needs facilities, especially in commercial zones. Lehi's Maureen Howard Place is in a commercial zone that allows housing and hotels by right. Our planned emergency shelter and permanent supportive housing facility should also be permitted outright. The ordinance already includes standards that these facilities must meet that addresses occupancy, spacing, and intensity of use, as well as other public health and safety concerns. The conditional use permit process is not necessary to add safeguards because the city's extensive list requirements already addresses these issues. Requiring a conditional use will only add time, expense, and uncertainty to the process, preventing Lehi from effectively and efficiently operating these necessary facilities. Lehi operates in multiple jurisdictions throughout King, Pierce, and Thurston Counties, and those jurisdictions have not required a conditional use permit. Second, the city must remove the siting and spacing requirements. The proposed 1,000-foot geographic limit and 50-person density limit violates our housing laws. As stated earlier, because these requirements are not imposed for permanent housing or short-term hotel use by non-special needs individuals, the city is also not allowed to place the city is also not allowed to place those limits for people covered under a protected class, such as a disabling condition, which again can be somebody with a substance use disorder or a mental health issue. Finally, we urge the city to allow operators like LEHI the flexibility we need to comply with state and county regulations by not imposing arbitrary operating procedures. Our state and county funders contractually require us to maintain safe and secure facilities and have decades of experience, experience enforcing the highest of standards. Our strict code of conduct that we utilize in all of our facilities results in fewer nine-one-one calls because people are housed and programs are well managed. This proposed ordinance includes requirements for city officials to review and approve plans like our code of conduct without clear standards or criteria. This level of discretion isn't necessary or appropriate for for facilities that are already regulated by the state and county. Given this level of just a discretion to city officials, there is potential to create a situation where we can't comply with both the city's requirements and the requirements of other regulators who have expertise in those facilities. We believe the proposed legislation may be violating these laws and we stand at the ready to collaborate with the city in good faith to work in modifications through this legislative process. Thank you very much for your time. We very much appreciate it.
Hey, thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Grant. We have a John Brown. Welcome.
Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, hi, planning commission members. My name is John Brown. Uh, I reside in Olympia, but I did grow up in Lakewood. I attended a high school at Lakes High School and then also a middle school at Mann Middle School. So I'm familiar with Lakewood. Um, my name is John Brown. I'm a program manager for the Low Income Housing Institute. I have over eight years of experience serving and helping the homeless population. LEHI operates three tiny house villages and two shelters in Olympia, Lacey, and the Tacoma area. We pride ourselves in the ability to provide a safe and stable site for both our clients and the surrounding areas. We go to great lengths to make sure we are great community partners and adhere to all public safety measures. All of our sites have twenty-four hour staff that are trained in de-escalation and how to handle any unforeseen issues that may arise or occur. We also have cameras at all of our sites that cover all the grounds. We also make sure to connect with the surrounding neighbors and local law enforcement. Our sites are both life-changing and supportive to the homeless population. We are giving individuals a second chance at life with our onsite case managers, which includes housing specialists and behavioral health case managers. Our staff is trained and specializes in assisting those that have substance, substance use uh, disorders. We're able to focus on our clients' physical and mental health while at the same time providing our clients with a safe and caring environment. We've also been able to move multiple families, singles and couples into permanent housing. With LEHI's thirty years of experience helping the homeless population and being one of the biggest nonprofits in both the apartment and shelter sectors, I'm both excited and appreciative to what the city of Lakewood and LEHI have done in the community and what we can do.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. I do have some people online um, that are wishing to uh, speak under the public uh, hearing. It looks like Amanda De Shazo.
De Shazo.
Shazo. Are you willing, uh, want to speak under public hearing?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Great. So, good evening, planning commissioners. I am Amanda De Shazo, the executive director of the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium, and I reside in Tacoma. I'm speaking today on behalf of my agency in regard to the proposed twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments. The Affordable Housing Consortium advances affordable housing across Pierce County by advocating and educating the public on the need for affordable housing. We're a membership organization representing fifty agency members with various interests across affordable housing. Our membership comprises developers and providers of affordable housing, architects that design it, builders that construct it, banks and financiers that fund it, social service providers who care for those folks who reside within it, along with faith-based organizations, government agencies, and individual advocates. I'm here to show my agency's concern for the proposed comprehensive plan amendments in regard to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, and emergency housing. In particular, we have issues with requiring a conditional use permit on these housing projects where one was not required previously, as well as incorporating restrictive development standards through the unprecedented numbers attached to the siting, spacing, and density requirements, and creating an unpredictable and onerous process for affordable housing developers by requiring agreements, plans, and expectations that are unnecessary. We urge the city to remove any requirements for a conditional use permit as we feel that permit supportive housing and transitional housing should be permitted outright as they currently are. Incorporating this requirement doesn't add any further safety requirements. It actually hinders the ability of affordable housing providers to do what they do best, develop and provide supportive housing for the most vulnerable residents in the community. Affordable housing providers and the consortium would appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on these issues. We fear that this will cause barriers to development and disincentivize the development of permanent supportive housing and transitional housing, which is desperately needed across Pierce County and the city of Lakewood. We also urge the city to work with the consortium and its members to better understand what requirements are already impressed upon affordable housing developers and how we can provide that information to the city in partnership, as opposed to in response to mandated requirements that will add additional barriers and hoops to jump through. I submitted some comments in writing with other ideas and I look forward to working with staff on these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Amanda. Appreciate your comments. Um, Naomi C., would you wish to speak under public hearing?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, y'all. Uh, my name is Naomi C. I'm speaking on behalf of the National Equity Fund. We're a leading nonprofit low-income housing tax credit syndicator who has invested more than twenty-two point seven billion dollars, representing two hundred and thirty-one thousand new affordable homes for individuals, families, and communities in need across the country. And today I'm speaking in opposition to the comp plan and amendment. As a low-income housing tax credit syndicator, we assemble investor funds to provide equity to affordable housing deals across the country. These tax credits, credits generally provide over seventy percent of the total funding for supportive housing deals. These credits are essential for leveraging local funds to ensure these developments get built. And these developments bring people permanently out of homelessness. Our invest, our investment in new um, low-income and affordable housing developments across the country relies on reliable, consistent, and efficient local permitting and regulatory processes. The thousand-foot distance requirements, operational contracts required as part of zoning, and conditional use permitting processes will all cause significant timing delays and cost concerns that will dissuade us and investors from making investments in affordable housing projects in your jurisdiction. Here is the reality. Setting aside the fact that your policy violates basically every protected class law there is, you can't zone people experiencing homelessness out of your city. Your emphasis on creating racist, classist policies that try to hide the most vulnerable instead of serving them is a reflection on who you are, not them. Instead of investing in real solutions, you are making it impossible for investors, organizations, and community members to create things that will actually support community improvement. Consider working with us instead and community partners who have shown that quality supportive housing and well-managed shelters with experienced operators are so, are solutions that actually create public safety, lift people out of poverty and hardship, and create stronger communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, we have Amy Townsley. You wish to speak?
Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone other than Naomi's hand still up. So if Amy Townsley, Brianna Swindoll, or Jessica Hall wish to speak, please raise your hand.
Again, she's um, Tiffany Spear is asking if Amy Townsley, Brianna Swindoll, or Jessica Hall wishing to speak? Seeing none, if.
Do you wanna, do you wanna testify?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. We have, uh, excuse me, Jen Hutchins from the LASSA organization wishing to testify.
Absolutely. Welcome. State your name and the city you reside.
Thank you. Okay, I feel like I reside in Lakewood since I spend about fifteen hours a day here, but I sleep at, in University Place. Um, and I appreciate having the opportunity to address you tonight. Just a few days ago, the city acknowledged um, the work that I've done in, and I mentioned you, Dave, by name as being a wonderful partner. I really appreciate the fact that the city has worked with LASSA to, to solve the problem of homelessness by providing affordable housing. And so I was um, talking um, to the city council just a couple of days ago about how much I appreciated you. And now I'm here to say, but gee, you guys, I don't think this is a great idea. Um, I wanna speak about the special needs housing and the conditional use permit. And I think if they suggested amendments led to better housing outcomes, then I would be, yes, let's go forward. I don't think it's gonna lead to better outcomes. I think what it's gonna do is create red tape. I think it's going to create um, a lot of work on the part of those of us who are providing services and trying to get people off the street. And I think it's doing so in um, in a good-meaning way. I think we're trying to make ourselves feel safe. Um, a couple minutes, and I don't think that's going to necessarily be the way to do it. And so I would like to echo what was said a few minutes ago about with one of the other speakers saying, let's get together and let's have a conversation about how we can work together and um, meet our objectives and meet the objectives of the city. What I would like to also say is that I also heard um, LASSA being brought up in the Prairie Oaks shooting that happened very recently. That shooting took place just several feet from where my desk sits. I've been working there for twenty-six years and I've gotta tell you, I am much more comfortable going to work than I am going to the Tacoma mall. It's, we have a problem in this world, but I don't think that this is the way to to deal with it. And so I would hope that you would meet with the providers and that we could have a conversation on how we can provide housing and and also meet the needs of the city as well. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then, Mr. Chair, we did receive some in writing. If you wouldn't mind, I could read the names. Okay, uh, Lauren Cootie regarding amendment twenty twenty-three oh four. Beris Harms also uh, regarding twenty twenty-three oh four, which is the LASSA application for a reason I should mention. Cindy B. for twenty twenty-three oh four. Laura Canard twenty twenty-three oh four. Paul Nimmo or Nemo twenty twenty-three oh four. And then, excuse me, Earl Peters also for oh four. There were also some written comments provided regarding twenty twenty-three oh five. Uh, first from Naomi C. and the National Equity Fund. Then also from Allison Reynolds from Stole Reeves LLP regarding twenty twenty-three oh five. So all of those are in the record as part of this public hearing and were provided to you today for review.
Great. So I'll ask one more time. Is uh, Amy Townsley, Brianna Swindell, or Jessica Hall wishing to speak under public hearing? Please raise your hand. Okay, hearing, anyone else um, in the audience that has not spoke and wished to speak under public hearing on the um, amendments, the two thousand twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments? Seen or hearing none? Ms. Spear?
Thank you. So as was mentioned in the presentation to the commission, staff would request that you would keep the public hearing open at least for twenty twenty-three oh five through April nineteenth. If you wanted to close the rest or keep it all open through the nineteenth, just we wanna make sure that oh five remains open for further public comment.
Yeah, so fellow commissioners, um, yes, Mr. Wegman? Okay. Okay, with just the oh five or all of it? Mr. Larson, oh five or all?
I don't understand your question.
Oh, sorry. Do you wanna keep the public hearing open for just the two thousand twenty-three oh five amendment or all of the amendments until the uh, nineteenth? Oh. Oh, 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 thank you. So, yeah, Mr. Parsons, thank you for commenting. So um, at this time, we will um, keep the two thousand twenty-three um, comprehensive plan amendments, all of the amendments, open until uh, April nineteenth noon. Please have any written comments um, forwarded to staff. And then, in August, uh, excuse me, August, April nineteenth, uh, we will have a discussion. We'll close the um, public hearing at that time. I appreciate again for all your uh, comments, your willingness to come before the commissioners. Um, we, we do appreciate all of your comments, um, and citizens to participate in this uh, public forum. So at this time, then we will continue the public hearing, two thousand twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments until noon April nineteenth. Thank you. Mr. Buhr?
I think you may wanna change that. I think you wanna continue the public hearing through April nineteenth at the meeting, rather than at the, at the timeframe that you referenced.
Okay.
You, you really wish to prefer people to comment further, why not you just keep the meeting open entirely?
That's why we keep Mr. Buhr on stage. Thank you, Mr. Buhr. So I will uh, amend um, that uh, we would um, request that the public hearing for the two thousand twenty, proposed two thousand twenty-three comprehensive plan amendments be held open until April nineteenth of uh, the planning commission's meeting. Now, Mr. Estrada?
So are we saying that at that meeting we'll continue to receive comments?
Yes. Mr. Buhr? Yes.
Because we were, we're likely to come back with an amended ordinance that I'm sure that the public will want to comment on.
Okay, so yes, we will hear testimony on April nineteenth as well as written comments. Clarify, Mr. Lynn Larson?
We said the written comments were due by noon. Is that changed now?
Mr. Buhr is recommending that it change, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all in agreements? Thank you so much. Yes, Mr. Parsons, thank you as well. Thank you for the clarification. Um, we appreciate again all, all your support coming here tonight. Um, we do welcome anytime. You're always welcome. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. We have none. Mr. Buhr or?
Tiffany, what will happen next is that the planning commission is scheduled right now on May third to take action on a recommendation to city council. And then a similar process will happen at the city council as well. Nothing more this evening.
No. Absolutely, absolutely. Under new business, results from the public outreach uh, regarding the Lakewood Climate Change Implementation Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just very briefly, um, this is an ongoing project. As you remember, the planning commission and then the city council adopted first an energy and climate change chapter for the comprehensive plan itself. And then there was an implementation plan passed last year. We now have um, work going on internally as well as um, with a little bit of help from our two thousand twenty-four comprehensive plan process um, to gather additional public input on that implementation plan. Because the chapter itself was drafted um, pretty much internal to the city. It was adopted and then the implementation plan was also developed without a lot of public outreach. And so this is an opportunity to go back and say, okay, general public, what do you think? Do changes need to happen either in what's in this altogether or do we need to change priorities? And so our um, steering committee that's addressing this from the community has met twice now. And they are not done with their recommendation, but I will be bringing that back to you um, either in late May or into our June meetings. So more details to come.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Bokey, city council member, Mr. Bokey, any um, reports?
No, I don't have any reports tonight.
Well, thank you so much. Uh, staff, any further reports?
Um, nothing further from us other than to say that, as you just saw, you'll have some additional information coming to you regarding, for sure, two thousand twenty-three oh three, which is the um, changed request from the racket club to change to a different zone than they first asked for, as well as two thousand twenty-three oh five regarding all of the conditions and requirements for those different types of housing. Um, I didn't know if any of you wanted to speak at all, uh, kind of debrief amongst yourselves about the joint session with um, the city council that happened on March twenty-seventh. If not, nothing further from us.
Okay, I'll ask, um, I wanna thank, personally thank Mr. Estrada for stepping in and and running the last meeting on behalf of myself and Mr. Pearson, um, we're unable to attend. Um, so thank you as well. If any of you that attended wanna make some comments um, regarding the joint with the city council, if you wanna recap or anything, if you were in attendance. Mr. Larson?
Mr. Estrada did a great job.
Mr. Estrada, you wanna say anything? You want to say anything?
I did a great job.
Okay. No problem. If, if, if no other recap or such, not. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just a comment regarding the extension.
Go ahead.
So at the conclusion of the brief on our 2023 work plan, council member, minister, indicated, well, that's quite a task you all have for the remaining year, suggests. And then he asked, how many have, how many of our members are going to be leaving this year or their time is up? And they said three or four. And he said, do you want the city council to consider extension for a year? The members who are going to leave? And that comment was, well, we'll have to go and discuss it amongst ourselves.
So I appreciate that, and that should be a discussion or a thought. There is four members currently of the Planning Commission that is, their term is expiring, and I'll just read off those names that are expiring in December of 2023, as Mr. Estrada alluded to. Myself, Chair Don Daniels is, the term is expiring. Ryan Pearson, Paul Wegman, and Brian Parsons, your term is expiring at that time. So you should consider, if you're going to consider reapplying, as Mr. Estrada alluded to, four members could possibly, you know, not resign or apply. So that is quite a majority out of seven. It's quite a majority. So that should be up for discussion. I think individuals, I think we can talk about it, you know, as we move along, but you should consider it now, kind of, if you're going to think about reapplying. So yeah, that's, he brought that up. The council brought it up. It is a majority. There's a lot of talent. There's a lot of longevities that has been here on this commission. So to have four people leave all at once and have four new people, it's a lot of history, a lot of knowledge. So just, I, I think you should all consider that. Is that the synopsis that we talked about? Okay.
Put your arm out.
Yeah. So any other comments from the fellow commissioners?
I got them. I got them.
Mr. Parsons, any comments on, of him?
No, I think that all makes sense, and I appreciate the, the work that Mr. Estrada did on that. I unfortunately couldn't attend live, but did watch on the replay, and I can, second or third or fourth, that you did a great job.
Yeah. Great. Yep. Thank you. Okay. So no other official business? Yes, Mr. Estrada? One more.
Good question. Just a clarification, Mr. Buhr. So this evening, the cons as such consisted for '05 was the conditional use and distancing primarily against those two. In reading what I have here, I didn't quite, I guess maybe fully understand what the disagreement was about, that is, why are they, why are they objecting to the conditional use? Why are they objecting to, to the thousand feet? And specifically, how does it affect that particular entity? And, and maybe I'm the only one who is, and, and maybe I should just come sometime and speak with you about it, or am I the only one that's?
Mr. Estrada, I would prefer that we wait, and we'll have this discussion on April the 19th, and we'll provide some additional clarification as, as to the city's position. But generally speaking, much of what they said tonight, we've, we've had some sort of preliminary agreement to support. We've also had some discussion also with the Department of Commerce. So we do recognize the need to end the code, and I would ask that to just be patient and wait till the 19th, and you'll see revisions that hopefully will address many of the concerns that you heard this evening, as well as maintain public safety requirements that are reasonable, if one can just put it that way.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Larson?
I'd like to speak to the Lakewood Racket Club program. Number one, I'm married to a member of the Lakewood Racket Club. I'm not a member personally, so if anybody thinks that I should not, not vote on anything, I certainly would respect that. The, I haven't looked at the detail in NC1 to know what else it allows. I would just suggest that, that if, if Mr. Whitaker is correct and NC1 is a, a better fit for the zoning, I, they can maybe explain, but I know just a little bit from the scuttle butt about the house. The Lakewood Racket Club has undergone a change of management recently, and there's a new life and a new energy there that I think more people are coming forward that candidly know what they're doing. And so with the appropriate caution to not open a door to uses that are not compatible with the neighbors, as they said they like the Lakewood Racket Club, we want to continue to be happy here. But part of me wonders, okay, why did they wait this long to pick the right zone? And I can't answer that, but seems, seems to be reasonable to support in some way.
Great. Thank you. All right. No other questions, concerns? Mr. Wegman?
I, I got a video from my son that I talked to you a little earlier about, and I don't know where the right place to bring this up, but you know, if we could get it on a schedule to talk about, or maybe I should get the video to, to Karen, and they can just send it out to all of us, and we can look at it, and we can say, hey, is this something we would consider? But it, it had to do with raising children in, in communities where we have less cars, and you know, how do you do that? So it, it allows children to mature earlier, and they can build a walk in the park without having necessarily a parent be there and those kinds of things. So it'd be, to me, it would be an interesting discussion with.
But then on the future agenda and, all right. Again, we'll try again. No other comments? Hearing none? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.